Welcome. I'm calling the meeting to order. Welcome to the February monthly meeting of the Morrisville Borough Council. I really appreciate you all coming out tonight. We've got a pretty full agenda, so we'll try to keep it moving as quickly as possible. But let's start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. Judith or Virginia? Judith, you're going to do the roll call?
Yes, Council President.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Sherlock?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Paul?
Here.
Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Manis?
Here.
Mr. Lubin?
Here.
Ms. Hoohol?
Here.
Ms. Price Engelhardt?
Here.
We'll call Council President. Oh, I apologize. Borough Solicitor?
Scott Holber on behalf of Flagrant Associates.
And Borough Manager Judith Danko. Thank you. We'll call Council President.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the first order of business tonight, I'm delighted to welcome the Chairman of the Morrisville Economic Development Corporation, Robin Reifmeier. I've asked Robin to come simply because in the three years I've been sitting on council, I haven't had any direct involvement with EDC and we haven't heard EDC or some of our other agencies, by the way, come to provide us with an update or report of what they're doing. So I thought this would be a great opportunity for Robin to be able to tell us what EDC is up to, what their mission is, what their current activities are. I recognize that because of confidentiality restrictions, there are some things she can't talk about or she can only talk about generally. But I also want to know how we on council can help in furthering the goals and the objectives of EDC. So without any further ado, I'll turn it over to Robin. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I don't think it's working.
Can you hear me now?
Just hello, one, two.
You haven't talked to my husband about that, have you?
I apologize for the audio difficulties.
I'll try and do my best here. Is that better? Okay. Good evening. My name is Robin Reifmeier. I'm the Chairperson of the Morrisville Economic Development Corporation. I was appointed to the EDC in January of 2020 and was elected Chairperson in October of 2021. So I'm relatively new to this role. The EDC was established as a result of a resolution by the Morrisville Borough Council in 1990 and incorporated as a 501(c)(3) under Pennsylvania law and is an entity in and of itself. The EDC can be credited for such things as bringing and helping to establish the Actors Net of Bucks County, making the initial contact with the garden market and encouraging them to bring their business to Morrisville, assisting Concerto Fusion with business and neighbor relations when they first came to the neighborhood. Excuse me. Bringing the pet stop today at the neighborhood to Morrisville, working with the DCNR and other state agencies to get the canal tow path and wafer signage installed. And that runs, the wafer path runs from New England all the way through Florida. The EDC hosted the first Winter Fest, which is now an annually event and an all-day event. We worked with the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources and the Morrisville Municipal Authority to have conference stations built on Delmore Avenue near the Calhoun Street Bridge right there. The corporation has also worked on things that either no longer exist or never came to fruition. For example, they established the Morrisville Messenger, which was a newspaper similar to the Morrisville Times. And through a green space grant, the EDC was able to place barrels, planters on Bridge Street. And the group worked tirelessly on the Gateway Project, the Reading Energy Project, and we can't forget the Visitor Center, all of which unfortunately never came to fruition. As set forth by our bylaws, the purpose of the corporation is to promote the economic and general welfare of Morrisville Borough by securing new industries, businesses, and commerce for the various borough neighborhoods. The promotion, growth, and expansion of business established in the borough and the promotion of appropriate proposed or projected developments in the borough and projects that will increase the flow of income into the community, the encouragement of appropriate new housing while preserving the quality of the borough's residential neighborhoods. The corporation has the right to purchase, own, lease, mortgage, sell property in general to do all things necessary, incidental, and proper for accomplishing its goals, including borrowing and lending money. In addition, the corporation shall function as a vehicle for cooperative projects for inter-community cooperation. The borough has not financially supported the EDC efforts directly. We receive no financial assistance from the borough other than the annual advertising and providing us with the meeting space. We have supported ourselves by hosting peach festivals, golf outings, and have sold debentures. We have also been fortunate that we've received a few grants. In recent years, the EDC worked closely with several different businesses assisting them to establish their business at the old water treatment plant on Delmore Avenue. Sadly, none of them succeeded. We don't have the time, funds, manpower, or expertise to refurbish the property to rent it. Last year, we voted to put the property up for sale and worked closely with the realtor to find what we consider to be a suitable buyer. We are happy to say the property is currently under contract. We are very excited by the plan that potential buyers have for the property and feel it's a good fit for not only the area but for our community. We are also working on several other real estate matters, but I'm not at liberty to discuss those at this time. Many groups in our community host events to try and draw people into our community, but most of those events aren't as well-attended as the same type of events as other communities. Unfortunately, perception of Morrisville from those unfamiliarly with our little town is not always a favorable one. The EDC board discussed how hard it is to advertise, the need to bring people in from outside of our community to our events, how we could change it, how to create days similar to Winter Fest. That would encourage people to come to our little town and linger just a little longer. On January 18th, the EDC hosted a meeting, invited groups in town that host events in the community, to discuss this. We invited the Morrisville Business Association, Imagine Morrisville, the Morrisville Little League, the Michael Sherlock Foundation, Solid Youth Rock Center, the mayor, all of the local churches, and Ms. Price Engelhardt from Parks and Rec. And all about 12 people came. The EDC came to that meeting prepared to offer financial assistance and purchasing banners to hang over our main roadways to advertise the events, to post flyers on our website, much like we did for Winter Fest, and to host an events calendar on our website. It was suggested at that meeting that instead of banners, what we really need to do is look into erecting an electronic sign similar to the one erected by the Rotary in Langhorne, not the Big M. We're not talking the Big M, okay? Talking Route 1 in Maple Avenue. That would not only post upcoming events but advertise our businesses as well. And that maybe by hiring a public relations firm could help alter the perception some people have of Morrisville. We met with this group again last week, and I'm very excited to say we are working on our first event day. And we are going to move forward with gathering information on an electronic sign and interviewing public relations groups. The EDC has also begun to work on two large events for next year, a scavenger hunt and a 5K. Although we don't expect to make a ton of money on either of them, our goal is to draw people into the community. Some of the things that we have accomplished, as I have been chair as, we revised the bylaws back in February of this year. Had our confidentiality agreement rewritten. We filed a descanial report. We developed a mission statement. We developed a vision statement. We've worked with Actors Net to have the property cleaned up, the shed removed. We covered the cost of the ban for Oktoberfest. And we purchased a domain name and we're developing our website. I'd like to thank you for giving the opportunity to speak this evening. I hope I've answered any questions you may have had.
Thank you, Robin. With respect to the property on Delmore, I assume that you probably can't tell us what they're planning to use it for at this point, but how soon do you anticipate it closing?
April.
Okay. And can you give us any idea what they plan to do with it?
I really can't.
Okay, I understand.
But I think everybody would be happy with it.
I think we'd be happy with almost anything there, frankly. It's been, it's a highly desirable piece of property, but it's been sitting there. I know it's driving everybody crazy for years.
And we tried to do what we could to refurbish it to do it, but it just, the cost is just too high at this point.
Do any other council members have any questions for Robin?
I do, Robin. First of all, thank you for coming in and talking to us tonight. You mentioned that you've redone the bylaws in February. Does the Borough Manager, the Council President, have a copy of these? And if not, can you send them to them?
The Borough Manager was sent them, although I kept the date here. They were sent to the Borough Manager, and Ted Parker was the Borough Council President at that time. Let me find it in my notes here. Sorry about that.
While you're looking for the date, I can say we did receive those.
They were sent on Sunday, March 6th at 9:28, and Judith responded that she did receive them on March 10th.
Okay, thank you. Judith, Mrs. Danko, you'll get a copy to everybody? Or you will?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Robin.
So I think when you were talking, you said that you revised them this year, February this year, but I think you mean February last year.
February of, yes, last year.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay, that's all right. I think that we were sent to those bylaws, but I don't think the last page with all the signatures were included. So if you could resend them with the last page included? The copy I got didn't have a last page.
Okay. I'll check into it.
Yeah. And where exactly is that LED display going to go?
We've just started talking about it. We came up with five different areas for possibilities, maybe six. All of them will probably have the need for us to acquire the land. We don't want anything like really large. Yeah, we don't want the middle town. Everybody agreed on that. But we don't, it's hard to say where we're going to put it at this point. Depending on where we can get the land, where is going to be our, it's going to be most seen.
Can you make sure you work with the Borough Manager on that?
When the time comes.
Yeah, thanks.
Well, we will have to be permanent to get all of that stuff, so.
Yeah, that's why it'd be a lot easier if you just work with her. And that way, everyone will be on the same page what has to get done. Thanks.
Anything else?
Thank you very much, Robin. Really appreciate you coming. I hope to be doing this with some of the other entities around town from time to time so we can have a better idea of what's going on. And again, as I say, is there anything we can do to help facilitate or support your activities? Just please let us know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the public comment section. First public comment, Debbie Colgan.
Hi, good evening. Debbie Colgan, 120 West Hendrickson Avenue. I'm here on behalf of the Environmental Advisory Council. It's heartening to see so many items on tonight's agenda that demonstrate the interest of our residents to protect, improve, and use our open spaces. The EAC urges council to support our parks and the activities that make Morrisville a more vibrant town. The riverfront preserve has been experiencing increased vandalism with random tree cutting by an unknown party. It's just senseless cutting. We ask that the public be vigilant and report any vandalism to the police. Per ordinance, the destruction of trees and plants in our parks is a punishable offense. Sadly, the preserve is also the victim of institutional damage by Conrail. With regards to item 8G, the Conrail letter that is on your agenda, the EAC requests that boroughs sign on to the letter. As council has been made aware, last October, Conrail wiped out a portion of the riverfront preserve's entry garden. They cleared an area 20 feet beyond their right-of-way, taking out established native trees, I mean, sorry, native shrubs and plants, and cutting tree branches and then just dumped them down into the preserve. As a reminder, the area had required the removal of large amounts of concrete, asphalt, and debris. Native species of trees, plants, trees, shrubs, and perennials were planted. Bucks County Open Space Dollars, state and other grants, as well as donations, were used to fund the improvements. Volunteers donated plants and shrubs and put in many hours to maintain the area. The front garden area is lined with a clear border of hard plastic edging and river rocks. It includes a large educational sign, and there is a prominently placed sign stating, "Excuse our mess," and indicating the preserve is undergoing restoration. We have been unable to productively interact with Conrail to address this issue, who has admitted that they did it. Not only about what was lost, but more importantly, how do we move forward? Conrail has not been a good neighbor. Conrail has displayed a lack of concern for the impact of its operations all along the tracks. There are piles of old ties, debris, gravel, some spilling onto neighboring land. Sections of the trail at the preserve are often obliterated when the debris is intentionally dumped down into the preserve. This activity is inconsistent with Conrail's statements on its website regarding its, quote, "dedication to providing transportation services in a safe and environmentally responsible manner." End quote. "Conrail strives to minimize the environmental impact our operations have on the communities we operate." While this doesn't rise to the level of the train disaster in Ohio, it does speak to the utter disregard that Conrail, a Norfolk Southern company, has for small towns like ours. Establishing relationships with the communities they operate to address concerns needs not only to be encouraged but demanded. Conrail is another one of the many industries in Morrisville that is exempt from property tax, yet their operations affect our community. The arrogance displayed by not even interacting with the borough on the matter that is so simple to fix is galling. We urge the borough to be forceful to resolve this issue. Thank you.
Lonnie Johnson.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Lonnie Johnson, 117th Park Avenue. And I stand before you as a person who put a letter of intent for the board position and resume. Just like to say hello to all of you. I've had over 20 years' experience in libraries. I've worked in many different kinds. So I'd just like to say that, and I still work in one now, that's my current job. And I would look forward to working in my own town and helping residents here in the library.
Thank you. Thank you for your interest in the Library Board.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to make a public comment? That's the end of our list. Okay, thank you. Moving on, approval of minutes. We have the Borough Council regular meeting of December 22nd, 2022, and January 17th, 2023. Can we approve them together? Or does anyone have any comments, questions on either one?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve them together.
Thank you. Second? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Very good. The minutes are approved. Thank you. Moving on to finance. We don't have a treasurer's report because we don't have a treasurer, right? But we do have the bill list and to pay the bills. And so I'd like to have a motion to approve the bill list.
Mr. Paul, can we go back to the treasurer's report just for a moment? The financials, the financials considered our treasurer report. And I do have multiple questions about the one that we received for January. And I'm just wondering if this will change? The, there are no budget figures in here? So the anticipated amounts aren't listed? So Judith can answer to that, I guess?
Sure.
Yes, we're currently working with Edmonds to get the budget for 2023 entered into the Edmonds software package so we can have the information that you're discussing, Nancy. We're currently working on that.
Okay. Are they also working on the prior year's revenue? Because none of those figures are correct.
They're working on all of that currently, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else with respect to the financials? Okay, then let's go on to the motion to approve the bill list and pay the bills.
So moved. Second?
All in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries. The mayor's report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. First of all, as always, we have a real good group of people here tonight to speak and to come see the meeting personally, and that's something I really appreciate. I know how much the people in this room care about this town, or they wouldn't be here. I'd like to, I'd like to remind everybody here and at home and whoever else may be watching this meeting that the people who are members of our boards and our entities are volunteers. And we need to work with them. I want to repeat how Mr. Bob's, with Mr. Paul, has said, how can we work with these boards and entities to help them do better as opposed to making some things more difficult? And I know that's not done on purpose, but it does happen. I'd just like to see, I think we could have a little more teamwork with these groups, and I think that'd be amazing. And this is all a great thing that you're here and getting things out in the open. And like I said before, I agree with Mr. Paul. We should all work harder on communicating better. So thank you again for everybody who's here from all our groups. I'm going to let the chief update you on the current status of our manpower in the police. And as we get closer and closer to spring, you know, sometimes activity of all types need to pick up. So, you know, be vigilant. But I think you should also get ready for a good year. We've got a lot of amazing events that are being worked on by a lot of different groups. And now that they're attempting to start doing these things together more and more, I think it's just going to be an amazing year of things here in Morrisville, and I look forward to it very, very much. So continue to hold us all accountable, all of us, our manager, our council people, myself. I get a lot of phone calls, especially over the last six, eight weeks. And keep doing that. That's the best way. Social media is not going to solve anything. Being here, contacting us, that's where we're going to get things done. And I want to see us go in that direction. So thank you, everybody, for listening, and thank you again for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief of Clay? For the police chief's report.
Good evening, council. It's good news and it's bad news. Justin Pickhart will be coming back March 1st, 30 days earlier than he anticipated. It's great news for us. So that puts us currently at nine full-time officers with one still on limited duty and expected to be on limited duty for quite a long time. Part-time status, Andrew Nagel unfortunately resigned and to start as a full-time officer at Upper Megfield. Andrew's going to be best. Andrew is a very good police officer. And we still have one out full, I have day leaving us with three part-timers, which is probably the lowest we've been since I've been here. I am interviewing one police officer who is an officer at Temple to become a part-time police officer. But I'm going to slow that down a little bit. He was unfortunately involved with the incident this past weekend where we lost an officer at Temple. So I'm going to slow that process down with him a little bit to let him recover. Speaking about that, Marshall Police will be represented at the viewing on Thursday night and at the funeral for Officer Fitzgerald Downey in the city of Philadelphia. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Borough Managers' Report. Ms. Danko.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for providing your information this evening. We look forward to working with all the volunteer groups and all of the exciting events to come this spring and summer. Currently, we had acquired an extra $88,000 in grant funding for the Bridge Street work that you see on that rendering over in the corner. We've talked about that for quite some time. We have had to change some items regarding to the walkway. That information is on the Borough Council agenda this evening for an approval. It is basically to provide us with pieces of the walkway. Instead of having to construct them individually, it would be a faster approach and work better and also cost us less. So we're working diligently towards that project. We're hoping to have that project done this year. And that would be something wonderful to have ribbon-cutting ceremony and something to celebrate once it's completed. So I think it would be a wonderful idea to work with some of the committees to accomplish something of that nature. So I'll keep everyone apprised. And it would be nice again to work together for something of that nature to celebrate the good things in Morrisville Borough. for something of that nature to celebrate the good things in, in Morrisville Borough. Excuse me. All of you have a copy of my report. I did view the clearing at Williamson Park near the top of the parking lot. I know, Ms. Cogan, I would just like to thank you. You've spent a lot of time at the park with helping clean up, and I know that you were instrumental in suggesting that this take place, and it was accomplished by the Public Works Department, and I'm glad that we were able to accomplish that. It looks much nicer to have that done. And I also thank you for the time that you put into the proposed letter and the information that is in that letter. It's very disheartening to see the damage that was done at the preserve, so we're hoping that we can move forward and, and possibly gain some help with what did take place there because so much volunteerism did take place, a lot of effort, time, and money. So it's very disheartening to see what did take place, and we hope that we'll have some positivity out of that information also. But thank you for that. And if I missed anyone that was also involved in that, I thank everyone. Sometimes I only get the, the key people that are communicating with me, so I do not want to leave anyone out if I did. Excuse me. There's a lot on the list. We just completed our 2021 CDBG Kerber ramp project. I know there were some questions with the contractor. Gilmore and Associates did meet with them. They did come out, they reviewed the area, and they have done some revisions. So we're continuing to view that area with reins. So if you see any heavy reins and you do see some puddling or anything that you notice, we're still in the period that we can come back and talk to the contractor and, and have the repairs or, or whatever is needed completed. So please let me know. It's vital that you inform me of, of anything that you're seeing out there so we can go out, back out and, and look at it again and, and check into it. And I, I see.
Well, thank you. Well, I know some of the residents that were concerned, so thank you very much. I'll let them know.
You're welcome. But again, if there's anything else that they see with the upcoming rains, maybe April or whatever, please keep, keep me apprised, yes, keep me apprised because it's important, we're in the maintenance period. It's important that we see that and report it during this period so it can be rectified by the contractor. But I appreciate everyone working together regarding that. Excuse me. We're also going to have a finance meeting tomorrow evening here at 7:00. We're going to talk about what we're utilizing the ARPA funds for. I'm not remembering some of the other items on the agenda, but if anyone's interested in attending, it's 7:00 tomorrow night here in this room. We've also received an extension, a time request extension for the DCD master plan for Patriots Park. That was a grant that was awarded some time ago and money.
Sorry to interrupt. That's Williamson Park, though, right?
I'm sorry. Did I? Yes, Williamson Park.
Okay.
And also, we did receive an extension for the Patriots Park also. There's a grant that's, yes.
Oh, that's great. What was that for?
That is for a master plan also. Yes.
I thought we approved a plan like in 2020. Okay.
We can, we can talk.
It might have to, something to do with the RCAP grant, maybe?
It may.
Which was bigger. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Continued efforts regarding working with the engineer slash architect for our emergency project, which is the roof that is on this building. We have some, some leaks that have been taking place for a pretty long time at this point, and the roof was looked at by the architects, and it is in disrepair at this time. It's served its purpose, and we need a new roof at this time. So we, we are working with the architectural firm at this time. There's some other repairs that they are suggesting, the contour of the sides, where the downspouts flow through the building itself. They're proposing several changes that would be more advantageous to this building than what we already have currently. So you will see some of this information, council will see this information shortly. So we've, we've been collaborating regarding that. And our superintendent, Mr. Leder, has been collaborating with an engineer and architect regarding the sewer project that we have going on and an electrical project that we have with the building. So you'll be seeing some of that information on our future council agendas as we, as we work on those items and move forward. And I think that, that wraps up pretty much of what is on my list, other than some of the minor issues that we work on day-to-day and monthly. Does anyone on council have any questions?
Mr. Paul, I don't know if this is appropriate time to ask John Leder's report. I have two questions about that. I mean, he does, I don't think you have to come to the microphone, John.
I think you should.
Because my first question is, do you think that we can have a plan for painting the street poles downtown this spring? Is that something that maybe you and I, or you and John, talked about, maybe?
John and I actually did talk about that. John, would you like to?
All the decorative, the decorative ones, yes. And the one at Delmore and Bridge, the bottom piece is all cockeyed because they're really, really just decorative. They're not holding, they're not holding the pole up. Okay. That'd be great. Thank you. And then I also saw we have ponding at Mercer and, and Prospect, and I'm gonna ask, when you're done with that ponding issue, maybe we can figure something out at the 400 block of Bridge Street. I know that the water leak was fixed, but there's still quite a bit of ponding, and it's, there's a ton of water down there now for about 50 yards. Yes, exactly. I'm not, it's not your fault. PennDOT, when they came and, and did the road, the pitch is all wrong. So there's no, it doesn't drain anywhere, just sits there.
And Nancy, could you please repeat those two areas for me so I could write that down?
Oh, well, the Prospect and Mercer, that's on his report. But the one I'm talking about is 400 block of Bridge Street, of West Bridge, I'm sorry, West Bridge. It's where we had the water leak, when we had.
Where I had that repaired.
All that ice and so forth, but that was repaired. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, move on to committee reports.
Parks Immigration?
Excuse me?
Parks Immigration?
Go for it.
Okay. Well, last month, in January 24th, we had an open meeting, all of our meetings are open, to invite people to discuss whether we should serve alcohol in Williamson Park for special events. I didn't get a huge audience, but we did get some, but many people had talked to me prior to the, to the meeting. And Judith was there, which was really helpful because we talked about what, what the process would be in moving forward. And one is we, so we need to change the code in our own code book and then make a, a new ordinance that would allow alcohol to be served in the parks for, or Williamson Park for special events. And then it was decided that with discussion with input from Judith, that it really should only be borough-sponsored events because we have more control. And I know that Judith was working on with our insurance company and how that would impact it and stuff. So we're in the process of moving forward and getting that to happen so that by this summer, that we'll be able to offer like a beer garden for the Oktoberfest and, and other events. Now Nancy went and talked with one of the churches.
The, the one pastor from the church. Because three of the churches in Trenton are actually who we're leasing this property from. So they said that as soon as we get a, a plan or what our, you know, what our proposal is, if we send it over to him, then they'll consider it. So it's the Methodist Church, the Baptist Church, and the Presbyterian Church, which is on southeast St.
He didn't seem bothered by it.
No, he was, he was not.
Yeah, so it looks like we're moving forward and it'll be.
Can I clarify that? He, he wasn't speaking for the other two, though. So they definitely have to talk together.
Yeah. So.
We can discuss that more when it comes up in the motion and the action items below.
Right. And then also, it will be part of the discussion at our next ordinance meeting. Remember?
If we go forward, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Any other committees?
Yes, Finance Committee. Scott, go, let Scott go.
One at a time, come on. Go ahead, Scott.
Do you say my turn or is it Andrew's turn?
Go ahead. Scott.
Okay, this is Scott on the phone. The Civil Service Commission met last night at Borough Hall. We had Chief McClay, the Chair of the Committee, Barb Bauer, myself, Clay Abers, the alternate Jane Berger, and our solicitor, Barbara Merly, were in attendance. We approved the minutes from our last several meetings. We approved our 2022 annual report, and now we're currently working on updating our civil service rules. They were, I believe they're, they were drafted in 2002 and there's been some amendments to them. I believe the latest one was like 2015 or 2018, and we're going to, we're gonna read after them and bring them up to date. Council approved this back, I believe it was maybe two years ago, I think when Ted was still here to, for, to give, to gave us the Civil Service Commission the okay to go ahead and, and bring the rules up to the 21st century.
And, and it's, the Civil Service Commission, Scott, the Civil Service Commission has its own council, right?
Our, well, it's our own commission. It's our own group. It's, they're three of us. It's my.
No, I mean, I'm a legal counsel to help you with the, updating the rules.
Yes, we, yes, we can.
Okay.
As our solicitor.
Just confirm.
We're, we're working on updating, we're basically taking our, our existing and we're looking at other, other civil service commissions, boroughs around the area, that what they do, and we're gonna, we're gonna come up with, with, with something up to date. We're relying on other boroughs to keep the costs down. Instead of having our solicitor rewrite them from scratch, that would cost a lot more money. We're going to, we're going to use, you know, collaborate with other boroughs and to keep the costs down. Our next meeting will be next Monday night at 6:30 in the Borough Hall, and we also have a meeting advertised for March 6th, which is the following Monday. That meeting is tentative if we don't wrap things up next Monday, the 27th. So that's all that I have for that tonight.
If I may, Council President, Scott, I was unaware of the previous approval, so because there's a new council, I have the updated rules vote on the agenda for this evening, so I'm sure it can't hurt to redo that again, but I just wanted to let you know I have it on this evening's agenda.
Mr. Holbert?
What rules do you have, Judith?
The, the agenda item is to have the civil service update their rules, the civil service rules. The same thing that you're working on.
Okay, well, that was, okay, so that's like, I guess that's just formality because that was already done like a year and a half, maybe a year.
The agenda item deals with, no, the agenda item deals with the eligibility list that's set to expire at the end of this.
No, there's also, HC is specifically.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Rules. My, 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 my position would be if it's already been approved, unless solicitor tells us that we need to approve it again, I would just go with the, the previous approval.
There's no need to do it. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't want to have extraneous approvals because that would suggest maybe in the future that we have to do something every year, every time there's a change in, in the council, which is clearly not prudent. So, so I would, I would, I would, I would suggest, when we get to it, we'll just skip over HC on the premise that they've already been, it's already been authorized by council and CSC acted pursuant to that authority.
Sure, to remove it from the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul, I have a question for the solicitor. Do they actually need, since they are their own body and have their own solicitor, do they actually have to come to us and ask permission to, to update them? Or isn't that something that?
I asked that question a week ago.
And he said yes?
So, yeah, well, we, you eventually, they'll bring the rules to you.
Correct.
To approve, but, you know, it's part of their job, yeah. I mean, I, I don't, I think if I remember, now that Scott brought up that last, but I think it was sort of a joint effort, and I think it was more of a council initiative to get the process started again, too. So it was asking them to engage with us. I can't remember, like you said, it was a couple of years. It was during that COVID time when we were all on computer screens and everything was glitching. So I think it was sort of a, more of a ask to get some changes in because there was some new people and things like that. It was getting restarted, I think.
Okay. I just didn't know if it was required legally to, to, for them to come to us and ask.
Pies me, too.
Because, I mean, they're a commission, they're a little body of their own that, they work on them probably on a regular basis. If something pops up, you know, they're paying attention, so that's all. I just was asking about the legality of it. Thank you.
Good point.
I, I think if you read the civil service rules, it states in there that council has to approve the civil service rules and any changes that go along with it.
I'm not disputing that part, but thank you.
Okay, anything else on that issue? Okay, anything, any?
Yes, Mr. Paul, if you don't mind. Finance Committee, Finance Committee meetings, we were, don't want to say held hostage, but we were putting second-rated with the Budget Committee meeting, Budget, which was since passed and adopted. But we have a new council meet, Finance Committee meeting starting tomorrow, 7:00 PM. Public is invited. Hope to see you all here tomorrow, tomorrow night, 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
I have something. So I have some good news. I know I've been talking about this, but the company down near the steel mill has approved a donation to the Morrisville Borough. They're going to come either next month or in April and present a check to the borough. They're going to give $65,000 in order for the borough to have a full-time truck enforcement officer. So, right? So hopefully that will get started. I know we probably have to work with the chief to see if he can let go of anyone or when that's going to be available, but the person on his current staff who, who has taken some certs will be fully certified in June or July, and so then at that point, I would imagine he would become a full-time truck enforcer. Prior to that, I don't know what, what his qualifications are to, to do any, anything down there, but at least we'll have a presence with him. So great news for the borough. I'm very happy about that. Part of, part of our proposal and our ask was that we also get a, I know, Chief, that you had that one big contraption that the battery had died, so, so part of that one proposal was to, on the other side going north, you have the solar panel, so the one going south, we will also purchase a solar panel so that the speed limit is being shown to the truckers. So hopefully it's the start of many good things.
Yeah, that is good news, and, and we will have to work, council will have to work with the mayor and the chief on rolling that out and how to best implement and hiring the new truck officer. In any case, we're moving in the right direction.
Exactly.
Mr. Paul, may I?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Helen, first of all, thank you. I know you've worked on this for months, and this is important. Everybody, you heard, everybody clap as you, as you brought this up, so I thank you for your hard work, and it, it is going to help. Chief, if you could, we've talked about this several times in the past. Can we just remind the people of that it, it's not as, it's not as simple as just making somebody a truck officer because you have to go through the civil service to do so. Do we want a truck driver on the street? Yes, and we have to have the proper numbers of police to do so. So I don't want to be a Debbie Downer because this is an amazing thing that Helen has accomplished, but I just want to, if you could, just take a couple of minutes and remind them of the process, please.
Number one, you got $65,000. That's enough for this year. And every time I talk about hiring more officers, they go, okay, what about next year? What about the year after? So you have to finance that into your, into the budget. That's number one. Number two, you gotta figure out whether you can hire just a truck enforcement officer and name him as that under civil service rules, or do you name him as a police officer? The third problem's gonna be is, are we hiring more officers? So that's something that council's gonna have to talk about and get that moving as quickly as we possibly can. But at this point, we have eight officers. Or do you want to talk about taking part of that $65,000 and just paying overtime to your officer now that you want to be the truck officer? There's, you know, there's other things we can do in that way. I can hire some full-time officers and put them out there and use part of that $65,000. That's something that's gonna be council's purview now they would of that plan. So I'm open to whichever way you want to go.
The money, the money is for a truck enforcement officer? So Judith, once they, I mean, I only got the, hey, you're gonna get this dollars. Judith would need to talk to them about, is this a recurring yearly? Judith would need to talk to them about, is this a recurring yearly donation? Or is it a one-time donation? That, I don't even know that yet. I, I only got a letter saying, congrats, it went through. I got approved, you're getting the money. So they're, they don't have the dollars yet. I mean, they have it, they didn't get it, you know, as in the check format. And when they do, they'll come here and they'll present the dollars. And I guess they'll explain what their expectations are after Judith has spoken with them about what they want, would like to see. So it's not like we can take that money and just say, oh, hey, look, we can do this. So there's still some things that have to get ironed out.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
I, I, if I remember correctly, you hire the officer and then you appoint him or you give him the, the instruction of being, of doing trucks. So doesn't that solve that we hire an officer, but they do truck enforcement? So instead of hiring a truck enforcement officer, we're getting the money, that we're getting the money for truck enforcement? Because you're right, it's not in the, it's not in the contract, it's not in the civil service. Like, it's not a position, is my understanding from what you told us before.
We had talked about that before.
Right.
And the best way to do it is you hire another police officer and his assignment is.
Truck enforcement.
And that's exactly what we did with Bo. I think some people think he was, you know, labeled a truck enforcement officer. Bo was a police officer that worked truck enforcement. And I know a lot of people miss him, so I'm really glad this conversation's getting started.
So there's going to have to be some, you know, we don't work for that, that person, whoever's giving us that money. So you gotta watch the strings that are going to be attached to that. So I question you with that.
Yeah, there, there's no strings. It's just, they're not giving us a blanket check to use as we want. The check is for.
That is a condition, too. It's, I mean, I take, I take that and we talked about that a little bit, Helen. I've talked with Ms. Danko also about it. It's complicated and we gotta, we'll have to work through it with, with the Chief, with the Mayor, and most, and anyone in council who's interested. But it's, it's complicated and with our, with our Solicitor to make sure that we're not overly constrained, that we can still do what we're required to do and authorized to do with our own judgment, but, but not reject or, or, or screw ourselves out of, out of a nice contribution to the community.
That is correct.
So we, we'll do, we'll, we'll make sure that we do it correctly. It's going to, it's going to be a team effort.
Yes.
Yes, I believe that we can accomplish this working together.
And one thing that the Chief did mention is ballot being reoccurring. And if it's not a reoccurring, then that's just another challenge that we have to, to find out for the following year, which was one of the pitfalls of the COPS grants in the past. If we were stunted sometimes because we knew that we didn't have the money after that was over. So, but I think it's a good thing and thank you, Helen.
Yes, thank you.
The company, whoever, I guess they're not revealing until they come here?
I, I don't want to reveal them. When they come here, they can reveal themselves. I'm not keeping it a secret. I just would prefer that they come and, and announce themselves rather than I announce them.
Okay.
The assignment you speak of, is that something that you have the money in your pocket for? Or is that something that also is another check?
No, that's all part of the 65.
Okay.
So.
You gotta wait to order it then?
Yeah. Yeah, we, Judith, when they contact Judith, when they have the check or the allocated funds, she'll have to get some more details. I didn't ask any details. I was just thrilled that, that we would see.
Maybe you can ask them for the 65 and then plus the $3,000 control sign. And that's 62,000.
I don't, I don't have a problem doing that.
I believe, I believe the letter did actually say that, but let's, let's see what we can do.
Once again, thank you, everybody. I look forward to getting this, getting our police force where there needs to be. I almost got hit by a truck myself today, seriously. And, but we gotta have the proper manpower on the street also. So I thank you, everybody who's been part of this conversation and the ones in the future as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Moving on to the action items. Item 8A, call for a motion to approve payment in the amount of $9,524 to Capital Health as payment per the EMS fund as of December 31, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. 8B, call for a motion to approve Morrisville Borough Little League annual opening day parade and ceremonies on Saturday, April 1, rain date, April 15, 2023, starting at 10:00 AM.
So moved.
Discussion?
Just for the public's knowledge, that will start at the Patriots or Summer Seeds driveway, you know, am I right there? And my understanding is they're also trying to enlist the fire department to lead them as they have in the past.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. And we're, we're going to skip over HC because we've determined it's, it's not necessary.
And with all due, with all due respect.
What are your notes? Just tell me.
Yes, with all due respect, I, I now realize why I had placed the 8C on the agenda again. This email came from Barbara Bowers and, yes, and, and she felt that we would need.
She said, I would assume since, her assumption is wrong.
Sure. I just wanted to bring it to your attention, everyone's attention.
Okay. I appreciate, no, I understood that going into it.
Certainly.
Going on to 8D. After discussion, consider a motion to direct the Civil Service Commission to follow its process for certifying the consortium list scheduled to be updated March 18, 2023, to replace the current eligibility list when it expires. Very, very convoluted. It's a little more words than we had in the original agenda, but I'm trying to clarify a little bit.
I'll make that motion for discussion.
But, yeah, but.
Council President Paul, may I slide?
Yes.
The next consortium is going to be on Saturday, the 18th.
Thank you.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, that'll be a fresh, a, a fresh group of potential candidates will be, will be, will be certifying off of the March, March 18 list. That's the next consortium.
Well, I'm a little confused. So last time we did this.
Real quick, there's, there's a motion. We either need a second or it needs to fail because of no second. So.
I'll second it.
There you go. Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. Here we are.
So, so, so when you say certus, make an eligible, eligible, eligible.
Eligibility.
Oh, my God. Yeah, that word. So our, we're not interviewing and making a list. It's just certifying the consortium.
Right, as, as I understand, the, the issue is although we're not currently contemplating hiring another officer, subject to what we're talking about with the, the truck enforcement business, but we, even though we don't, we don't have an immediate opening that we're planning to fill and we may not need to, to add, to, to have a new list of eligible candidates, just in case we do need to, we want, we want to make sure that we've already have a certified list. And so the next testing data, Scott points out, is March 18th. The people who pass that will be listed, will, will, will end up on an eligibility list. And all we're doing is saying that we want to be in a position to, to certify that list if we need to use.
If we need to move forward. Okay, just making sure.
It's really just a contingency at best.
Yeah.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
What you read was about twice as much as what's on this. Is there a second one or is?
Well, no, I was, I was, I was working, I was working with, with Mr. Holbert earlier today and, and, and the Borough Manager to try to clarify because I, I thought it was still as clear as mud. So I was just trying to, I was adding a few words and.
Do you mind reading that again?
Yeah.
Please.
This is still not that, this is still not great. In fact, Barbara Bowers' memo really explains it the best. And, and, and what Scott said really explains it better than, than my inartful drafting. But I think what's close, at least Scott told me it was close, is, is the Civil Service Commission to follow its process for certifying the consortium list, I say scheduled to be updated March 18th. It's really scheduled to be updated following the examination on March 18th to replace the current eligibility list when it expires.
Okay, well, my, my first still stands.
Yeah, the idea here is basically the Civil Service Commission is just asking for direction. Do they want, does council want them to go forward knowing your list has expired? Even though, as Mr. Paul said, we don't have someone in the wings to be hired, but are, because our list expires at the end of next month and it's already been renewed, so it cannot be renewed again. And if, if, and if I recall, we're only down to one person on that list anyway, so.
Right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I'll be interested to see how it reads in the final version. Item 8E, call for a motion to approve the Easter egg hunt sponsored by Morrisville Yardly Rotary Club to be held on Saturday, April 8 in Williamson Park from 9:00 AM to noon.
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Do they have a rain date?
Wasn't in the, they usually don't.
No, because if Easter, once Easter comes, it's, it's too late, right?
Well, the 15th, I think they can fill, right? Or am I wrong?
Well, in any case.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Rain date right now.
It's, it's not in their letter, so.
Item 8F, call for a motion to approve holding the car show sponsored by Morrisville Business Association at no cost to the Borough on Saturday, May 20, 2023, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, rain date, May 27, 2023, on East Bridge Street between Delmore and Pennsylvania Avenues, and to authorize the Borough Administration to submit the permit paperwork completed by the MBA to PennDOT.
So moved. I second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Hold on, I have a discussion.
Okay.
I've, I've had trouble with this. I don't want to sound like a Debbie Downer, but I know of, of two businesses on East, East Bridge Street that their blood pressure goes up when this happens because their, their street gets closed down, their business, and their businesses are severely interrupted. Is there any kind of, anything we can do? Like any, any kind of compromise or something for these businesses? Like, for example, I'm not saying this is one of the businesses, but if I owned Ben's Deli, I'm open from 6:00 to 2:00 on a Saturday, which is a pretty busy day. My business, if I'm, if I'm that deli, my business is severely impacted that day. You know, the, I don't know about Hot Rides down the end. I believe they're open on Saturday, but they're a car company anyway, so they, they would probably welcome the traffic. But, but Bears Auto is open on Saturday and would do nothing at Bears Auto without involving a car, which you wouldn't be able to get the car in and in. So thankfully we're shutting Bears down that Saturday. You know, there's a lot of people that work during the week that may take their car down there on a Saturday to get repaired. And again, I'm not, I'm not trying to be a Debbie Downer, but there are, you know, there are businesses down there that aren't happy about this.
Well, Scott, if I can reply on that, let's use some hypotheticals since you didn't give their name. Hypothetically, the MBA has already talked to Ben's Deli who thinks it's a great idea because they think their food services will expand on that Saturday. Hypothetically, Bears has already been, been asked, hypothetically, of course, and has indicated they would like to get involved in it and the MBA can use their power. So those are two hypotheticals that think it's a good idea. So if you have anybody else, give me a call and we can discuss it, please.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
I just, you know, when you have an event like this, obviously the people that come will have to find someplace to park. It's not the end of the world. We have a parking lot, they can park up and down Washington Avenue. I mean, so I don't see, and as far as Bears goes, we're not closing it down until nine o'clock, so they can still have people come and drop their cars off if that's necessary.
Eight o'clock, we're closing it down.
Well, they're starting to sit up, right? At eight?
I thought Bears was closed on Saturdays.
I would, I would just suggest that everyone that's, all my colleagues on Borough Council, that while you're supporting local business in the next several weeks on East Bridge Street, when you stop in to get a sandwich or, or a, or a container of soup from Ben's Deli, maybe, you know, speak to the owner. If you stop into the Robert Morris Inn for a beer or a soda, you know, speak to that owner, you know, the owner of Bella Sicily, you know, stop in to see the staff at Bears, whoever's working there on Saturday. And just ask them, say, listen, we're, you know, we're going to have this car show here. But how do you feel? What, what can we do to, to reduce the inconvenience to you as much as possible? And again, I'm not against this car show. I think the car show is a wonderful idea. I think it's going to bring people in town. But on the other hand, you've got businesses down here that are trying to survive. Businesses that are spending a lot of money, which is tax money, property taxes and, 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 and the EID tax and the business tax and the mortgage removal and everything. It costs a lot of money to be a business on Bridge Street. It's not like, you know, someone living in an apartment in the Borough or living in a house, you pay your taxes. These people are spending a lot of money to operate that business that they have.
Hey, Scott.
Yeah, with all due respect, we are talking about six hours.
Scott, if you look at, if you Google, if you Google Bears, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, they're open Friday. Saturday, it says closed on Saturday. So really, we're, really, we're good here. Really, everybody likes it.
I thought they were, I thought they must, they must have changed your hours because I know, I thought they had an open.
That's why they had no problem with it, Andrew.
Well.
Anyway.
Don't take your car there Saturday, Scott, because they won't be open.
Scott, I think we all want, I think we know where you're coming from and I think we all want to support you, supporting the, the businesses. But in, as, as Bob said, it's, it's six hours. This is an event. We're trying to have the event, we're trying to have more events. And the inconvenience, I think it's not necessarily for the businesses, but it's for the people that are going to be parking not close to the business. And I don't think that's actually going to keep people from, from going to get their hoagie or their pizza or their, you know, or their flowers at edible arrangements. I don't know.
And the other thing they could do, the other thing.
I understand that's the optimistic, that's the optimistic viewpoint, but I hear the pessimistic viewpoint. I hear it because I go in this business and I hear it. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't have said anything about this tonight if people didn't complain about it to me in the past. I'm not making this up, okay? I'm, I'm speaking for the business owners on East.
We get it, we get it, Scott. We get it, we get it, Scott.
Several women have brought this up to me. I'm not making this up.
Okay, we're not saying you are.
We trust you. So, but the other thing is, we have an event and there are people that are going to be there. The business is to try to figure out how they can utilize the foot traffic coming through and, and maybe set up tables and, and if they have food, they could put a food table out there and they can enhance some of their business, too.
This is an example, we talked earlier about the Economic Development Corporation and how we, how can we help them? How can we help other, um, entities in town that are trying to develop business and attract, attract newcomers? Um, and that's what the Marshall Business Association is all about. And they've been talking about this for quite a while. They, they've sponsored car shows in the past. I think this is essential to our plan to kind of keep doing everything we can to try to bring some new blood into here. But I, I take your point and that we should be mindful of the sacrifices that some of the local businesses might be making that day, but I think in the long run, it's, it's in the community's best interest. And that's what we're going to vote. And if, and if the majority agrees with you, fine, but I think that we should put it to vote now unless anyone has any other comments?
We can vote then.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. And, and by the way, Scott, I appreciate that you're Debbie Downer comments because we, we really do need all viewpoints represented and nobody likes to be Scrooge or Debbie Downer, but you know, it, it helps to bring out the salient points in conversation. So don't be, don't be intimidated.
I'm just, I'm just keeping it real. I'm just bringing it up.
Exactly. I appreciate that.
That's, that's all that I'm doing.
Exactly. Perfect. Okay, moving on. Item 8G. Call for a motion to approve the Borough Manager to send a letter to Conrail regarding the clearing within the Riverfront Preserve easement area.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Discussion?
So did Conrail actually come forward and say, like, we did it?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's all, it's all pretty much.
And do you know, like, you had mentioned during public comment that the trees were being cut down in the preserve? Is it like by an axe or by a chainsaw?
Chainsaw, someone comes in and plays with a chainsaw and just kind of cut the tree. Um, but I can't tell if it's a handsaw. One definitely was chainsaw, another in the middle that was a handsaw or chainsaw. It was completely cut. That's completely chewed off.
That's crazy.
It's insane.
And they don't take the wood, they just cut it and leave it? Right. It's a shame. Yeah.
All in favor? We haven't voted on this, have we?
Not yet.
I have another, I have another comment.
Go ahead.
I don't think, this, this isn't really Conrail related, but it's related to that area down there by Route 1 and, and the railroad tracks on South Delmore Avenue. A resident and longtime resident, longtime business owner approached me with a, with a complaint. I guess I could call it a complaint. Um, it's a business owner in Borough that has done a lot of good stuff in this borough. He is a really, really good guy. He's been scared of a lot of people. Um, and he has been historically has went down and backfilled some of the area down there with dirt, um, that gets washed away or whatever. He plants grass down there, landscapes the area and whatnot. Excuse me. And he was down there recently and evidently, I believe, the code enforcement officer was going by or, or it was someone from code enforcement that told him he needed to cease what he was doing immediately. And he was kind of hurt and offended by it because he's beautifying the town, he's not charging the town, he's doing it out of the goodness of his own part. Backfilling, planting grass seed and whatnot and was told he needed to cease. That's all that I heard. I didn't hear any other side of the story, Judith, maybe you can elaborate if you heard anything. Um, this just happened within the last week. Um, I don't know why, again, I only know his side. And my question is from his side is, why would the code enforcement or anyone involved at the borough put out and tell him to cease work that he's doing in the borough, making it look nice, nice, sir, at no cost?
Yes, Scott, I can certainly help with this information. Uh, yes, this person was asked to cease and desist dumping any, uh, any dirt, rocks, or anything of that nature in that area. Uh, this would not be an allowable item to take place. Uh, he was, uh, spoken to by code and explained why this is not an acceptable item. Uh, this is something that is not allowable. Um, code did explain that to him. And I know a couple of council persons that also questioned this, and Mike Italia from the Barry Isetton Company did respond as to what they had done. Uh, the borough could be responsible also. Uh, if we look the other way with something of this nature, uh, the Army Corps would be involved, DEP, County Conservation District, um, there's many entities that would be involved with something of this nature. Uh, so it's something that we have to be very careful of. Uh, so the process that was taken, the process that was taken.
Let her finish.
Sorry. The process that was taken, that's right, the process that was taken by our code and so forth was proper, um, and, and in, in letting him know that this is something that's not allowable.
And if I could add to that, this same person had contacted me and I did some research and from what I understand is that by, um, that is actually the river line and the river, when the tides rise, go into that area. And by filling it in, you're now changing where the water has to go. It's been displaced. So it may appear that, oh, I'm just making it nice and I'm building up a bank and et cetera. But what you're really doing is you're either causing flooding either more up, uphill or downhill because the water doesn't have anywhere to go anymore. So before anyone can do anything like that, they need to contact either the Delaware River Keepers or the Army Corps and they need to get permission. Is, is that all right to do?
Thank you, Helen, but as a borough's listener points out, we're going pretty far afield from the discussion of the motion. Um, is there anything else with respect to the letter to Conrail that we, that anyone wants to talk about? Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Um, 8H. Call for a motion to approve Morrisville Community Service Day mural painting at Williamson Park to be held on March 18, 2023, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
I so move. I know Andrew said second, but I don't know that anybody, can't hear you, Andrew.
Second.
Well, they got it now.
Yes, I had gotten that, thank you.
Why was this being advertised before it became to council?
Yeah, I had the same question. I take it the flyers are already going out? So now we're just, we're rubber stamping it?
Do the flyers, do the flyers come with the same packet? Or no? I, I don't know.
I had received a flyer and I placed it on the Borough Council Agenda. I'm unsure as to where they have been placed ahead of time. I don't know. Were they?
Yeah, have they been posted anywhere or?
No, I gave it to you.
Okay.
No, it's, it's been posted all over.
Oh, has it?
Yeah, it was posted before it even became an agenda item. Did they come to you, Judith, to get all the permissions that they need?
I believe so.
Okay.
At this time.
Yeah, I mean, I'm perfectly happy to approve this. I don't want to tip my hand on that, but, but I do think that if we're going to go through the formality of approving things like this, it's foolish to approve it after the, after the fact, after it's been announced. I would just suggest that in the future, we coordinate better, um, timing wise.
I don't know that that was at our end, though.
Whose end was it?
I'm guessing, uh, the, uh, the Solid Rock Youth Center, I guess. I, I mean, that's where it came from, right?
But if, but if it's going to require us, the Borough Council, to approve it, then they don't have, they don't have the, the ability on, unilaterally to.
Well, I'm agreeing with you, but I'm just saying, so it didn't, my understanding is they went to Judith.
When we're working, when we're, when we're working with these, with partners, we just need to make sure that, that we're keeping everybody informed that we're, and that we're doing things in a chronological order that makes sense. Having said all that, though, we have, we have the motion.
I apologize. Uh, I may have misspoke. I am unsure if they have followed through with the application process for this. I did send them an email that they needed to go into the Borough Office and speak with Lorraine and fill out the event paperwork. I cannot confirm that this evening if it did take place. Uh, there's been a lot of going back and forth with getting and receiving the information. And then I emailed them, you know, notating that please, uh, come in into the Borough Office and fill out the paperwork. So I apologize, I may have misspoke. I'm not sure.
So do you want an amendment to the motion?
I was going to say, modify the motion to, to approve it, you know, subject to completion or submission.
Of all proper paperwork.
Or required documentation.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay, fine. Uh, with any other, any other discussion?
Do we have to approve the amendment?
So moved.
Do we have to, do we have to approve the amended language or can we, well?
Well, is this motion made, so you're already in the step, yeah?
Because the motion is second, right?
If you're amending it, yes, you need to change, you need another.
I'll motion to amend.
Okay.
I second it.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Great, okay. So voting on the amended motion. We all know what the amended motion is now?
Yes.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Great. Thanks. Yeah, I hate to get caught up in the procedural niceties, um, but there's a right way to do it and we might as well do it correctly. Um, and anyway, that's.
Well, for verification, I didn't know about this until it came in our packet. So this is not something that, you know, I'm not sure who had been.
I put it there, but he told me he'd already gotten the stuff into the borough.
Oh. So maybe he did.
I don't know.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Item 8I. Consider a motion to approve the first Saturday in October for the annual Oktoberfest.
So moved.
Discussion?
Do you have all your paperwork in?
No.
All right, well, this is Borough sponsored, that's a little bit different, right? Uh, guessing is their answer to that? It is Borough sponsored. We had it last year, we're making it, we want to make it an annual event. I didn't put the paperwork in because I wanted it to be voted first.
Thank you.
You have time, 30 days. It's in October, so we're good.
Let me ask you this, is the Oktoberfest, is your plans for the Oktoberfest dependent upon approval of alcohol in the park? Or is it?
No.
Proceeds regardless of that?
Yeah, proceeds.
What exactly will the Oktoberfest be?
Similar to what we did last year.
I don't remember what that was, like, I don't need like every single detail, I'm just asking in general.
It'll be vendor, you know, community, vendor booths, food, music.
Okay.
Yeah. Fun. Cotton candy, hot dogs.
That's good.
Bouncy house.
Bouncy houses.
Okay. German beer. That's what I'm, I didn't say that he did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Item 8J. Consider a motion to explore the legal issues and risks relating to permitting alcohol at Borough Parks.
So moved. That's Jason. Okay.
Discussion?
What's the next step? We did get a letter from our insurance company, from Thompson, um, regarding what our, uh, what somewhat what the process would be with regards to our insurance company and what would be required. And that seems to be that it's up to us if this is what we decide to do. And we make sure that we get, um, a second insurance from those that are serving the alcohol and make sure that we card people.
And, and what's, what's going to be the budget for exploring the legal issues? Do we have a cap on that or is it open ended? I mean, I, I mean, I guess first, I think we should, in my humble opinion, I think first we should talk about, do we want to proceed with, do we want to take it further? Um, well, I guess that's what we're talking about here before, you know, knowing that it's going to require additional costs even before we get to the final point to make a decision. Anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm only making it more confusing, nevermind.
Well, can I ask, uh, Mrs. Danko, did you speak to, I know you spoke to the insurance company, so that's how we got the email, but did you have any discussions with our attorney about this?
I did not, no. I was waiting this evening for the vote to do that because I needed approval before we went any further. I had.
I would think a consultation at, at best won't cost that much just to get us started and say yea or nay or, you know, somewhat of a, um, you know, an estimate of what it might be or how long this is going to take.
Right.
You can't do that. I wasn't going to put him on the spot.
Well, I'm thinking about it, I mean.
You can have some preliminary.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I mean.
Information is handy, as I recall.
I mean, the, probably the most work on this, I mean, we have the deeds, we have all that, that's information, that'll be, I mean, most is going to be writing the ordinance and writing the revision, so.
Uh, excuse me. One of the things I've done, Scott, is I've contacted other boroughs who have ordinances and all that, so, and they've sent me their verbiage. So I, I was supposed to get it to Judith and I haven't, but I will do that. So that will probably help the process.
Yeah, yeah, we would, yeah, we would use other places that have localities who've done similar things. Um, I know of at least three others where I've worked that have events like this in their parks, so there's, yeah, there's starting places for it to be done. I can't imagine it would be a long drawn out process, no.
It's a little bit more than that.
Not ma, not more than 10, I can say that. Say not more than 10. And that's the, that would be the high side. So yeah, I mean, a few hours at most to get to the preliminary steps of what would need to be done.
Is everybody in agreement with a few hours? Or do we need to put a cap amount here or?
Could you just explain what this is? Because the motion is to explore legal issues and risks related to allowing permit alcohol at the park, but you're already saying you've already looked into the insurance, you're talking about making an ordinance. Um, I don't know how you jump from just exploring to we're going to have an ordinance.
Well, the exploring part is just the legal, the legal exploring. We've talked about this at the Parks and Recs and Judith said that she would contact the insurance company, which was a simple ask, that was just a phone call. But as far as legal, that's where your money comes in. So that's why it's on, that's why it's on the agenda.
It's also on the agenda because some people might not.
Want to do it.
Want to pursue alcohol at all.
So, so when, when the senior center was going to have alcohol at an event, Nancy, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't like that concept, but it, like, you've changed your mind that alcohol in the park is okay?
Because it was not a rule at the time. It was against the rules at the time. The building is owned by the county, but we own the parking lot. So the county wouldn't have allowed it for sure. So are we all just all sit up here silent or just, let's take, let's take the vote? If you don't want to do it, say no.
Any other comments? Any other, any, any council members want to express any comments or feelings about permitting alcohol in the park?
For a Borough sponsored event only. This is not open to any Harry, Dick and Larry that wants to come and have a party.
Although that, that's not what the motion says, but that's, you know.
Well, we can add it.
Can we make a statement?
Borough sponsored events, I guess we should say.
If, if you were to explore this, then the ordinance would state that.
Right.
You can make that as part of your policy for it.
Okay, do we want to vote on this? Any, any other comments?
Are we voting for Borough sponsored events to what we see in front of us?
What you see in front of you. You're, you're voting to consider a motion to explore the legal issues and risks related to permitting alcohol at the Borough Parks. This would be something that the solicitor would need to review and provide you with a synopsis as to what direction they feel that council should take.
Well, no, they won't, I don't think they'll tell us what, what direction council should take. They'll say what you have to do depending upon which, which choice you make.
Correct.
I mean, and that's, anyway.
And these are the risks.
Cide, cide is what I'm saying.
And that's listed in the motion.
Present it to the council?
I'm sorry, Carlita, could you repeat that, please?
Is there a time limit in what you want this to be presented back to the council as far as the legal issue? Because, I mean, you can't just say, um, explore the legal issues out of timeframe, otherwise it's just going to keep going and going and going.
Right. Right. We would have, we would have something next month.
Yes.
We would have a report back for the, for next month's meeting.
And if this is approved.
Most likely before then.
I'm sorry, Mr. Paul. If this is approved, we'd like, we would want it sooner than later so that we can make arrangements for any activity we want to have.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, we do.
Do we have a second on the floor?
Yes.
We have.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Let's do the roll call, I think, for this one. Go ahead.
Ms. Price Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Manis?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray? Scott Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
No.
Mr. Lubin?
Until it says borough sponsored, I vote no.
Miss Hall?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what Mr. Lubin said.
I said until it says borough sponsored, I have to vote no.
Yeah, I agree, no.
Motion passes 5-3, Council President.
Okay. Item 8K, call for motion to approve updated plans for the Bridge Street project.
So moved.
Discussion?
How much time is this taking you, Judith, on a regular basis? It seems like it's taking, the Bridge Street project takes a lot of your time.
I apologize. I just.
It seems like we have a motion, a resolution every month.
Right?
Yes, this, this has taken quite a bit of time every week. Yes, it has, for months.
No, no, I meant the one we're doing now.
I'm hoping that once we have the grant funding to follow through, that, again, that we can close this project out after the construction this year. But it is taking quite a bit of time, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries.
Council President, may I ask again, who made the motion and a second for that?
I think Ms. Sherlock made the motion.
And Ms. Murray was the second.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 8L, call for a motion to approve a borough council resolution imposing protocols relating to borough office management and confidential communications.
Some of. I was going to make a motion to table it.
Well, I'd like to second it. Which motion came first?
Yes.
I'll say. Then I'll second it.
Okay. And then we go to discussion?
So the tabling is off the.
Make sure Alex is going to suggest table in it?
I would like to make a motion to table. I don't know if I have to give my.
Yeah, any second?
Second.
Okay, do we? Yeah, should we do?
I'm a little confused.
Do we do a roll call?
Yes.
Let's do a roll call.
And this is to, to table?
To table.
Can I ask why?
No, no.
Okay.
I'm learning.
This is to table?
Yeah.
Ms. Price Engelhardt?
To table, yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Miss Hall?
No.
Mr. Lubin?
No.
Mr. Manis?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Mr. Paul?
No.
One, two, three, four, five, five noes. Or yes. Motion does not pass to table.
So back to discussion of the original motion.
Do you want to explain to the public what this is? Explain to the council what it is.
Exactly.
Yes, well, I mean, all the council has seen this, it's not surprised any of you.
But. We've seen what, explain, Mr. Paul.
You want me to explain it or not?
I'm asking, I'd like a question first. What is it that we saw? This motion, you mean?
You haven't, you haven't seen the, you haven't seen the resolution proposing the protocols?
We've, we've seen a resolution.
Yeah, well, that is the motion. That is, that's what the.
With no list of protocols or what they are?
The resolution is the protocols. I mean, it is, it's, it's discussing.
Okay.
Governing how council communicates with each other and with borough manager. And this was prepared by, by our labor, our labor council who works with, on labor matters and police matters with us because he's watched us in action. And he thinks that, he suggested that we should have some resolutions that, that govern our communication with each other because it's gotten out of hand. As you can, people can see it tonight to some extent, but, I mean, it gets really ugly and it's, it's a situation, it's a situation that I'm not happy with and I think other members of council aren't happy with. And I thought it was, it was an excellent suggestion by, by our, by outside council. And a majority of us apparently agree. So I think it's, the, the protocols speak for themselves. What's your objection, if any, to the protocols?
Should we, should, maybe we could read the resolution for the public?
Okay. Yeah.
Borough council resolution imposing protocols relating to borough office management and confidential communications. Whereas the borough council of, the borough of Morrisville, here and after the borough, acknowledges its obligation to ensure a workplace environment that is free of discriminatory practices, harassment or threats to the public, to the health, safety and welfare of borough employees and citizens who may enter upon borough-owned property. Whereas the borough council also acknowledges the need to maintain the orderly, efficient, dignified and peaceful administration of borough affairs. And whereas the borough council recognizes the need to establish appropriate protocols that will ensure the orderly and peaceful administration of borough affairs particularly, particularly with respect to interactions between and among members of council and borough employees. And whereas the borough council recognizes and respects the need of individual council members for information that is necessary to execute their response, respective duties as elected officials while balancing the need for an orderly and efficient execution of duties assigned to the appointed borough manager. And whereas the borough council acknowledges the need to ensure the confidentiality of communications between the council and attorneys retained by the borough in connection with litigation and personnel matters. Now therefore be it resolved that the following protocols regarding the borough office management and communications shall be adopted and implemented immediately. Communications with the borough manager. One, the borough council acknowledges that no individual member of council has the authority to direct the borough manager or any other borough employee to act. Rather, the borough council acknowledges that the authority to manage, supervise and direct employee, borough employees is vested exclusively with borough council, the official acts of which are approved by a majority of council members as the governing body pursuant to Pennsylvania law. Two, all communication between and among all elected officials, the borough manager and all borough employees shall be conducted in a respectful, non-discriminatory manner. The borough manager, or three, excuse me, three. The borough manager shall respond to the best of his or her ability to requests from individual council members for information or copies of documents as soon as is reasonably possible, considering the time constraints imposed by the duties and responsibilities of the borough manager. Members of council shall avoid requesting information and documentation at a time which requires an immediate response. Four, in the, in the absence of a directive from the majority of borough council, the borough manager shall not provide individual council members with information relating to personnel matters, which includes information contained in personnel files. Five, in the event a dispute arises concerning a request for the information made by an elected official to the borough manager, the borough manager shall promptly advise the council president of the dispute in writing. Excuse me. The council president shall promptly present the dispute to borough council, which shall resolve the issue as a body. Confidential attorney-client communications. All members of council shall maintain the confidentiality, confidentiality of communications between council members and attorneys retained by the borough relating to litigation and personnel, personnel issues in accordance with the applicable law. Right to know requests. This, this resolution shall not be construed to affect the rights of any individual council member to request information in accordance with the procedures set forth in Pennsylvania's right to know law. And then it would, and effectively would be adopted by the council borough at its meeting held on and then date, should you adopt it.
Thank you. So my, my question is, what precipitated this? And while I completely agree with the last two about the right to know and the confidential, confidential attorney-client communications, I want to know where all these others.
What precipitated this, Ms. Sherlock, has been the behavior of a number of council members for the last, let's see, I've been on council since January of 2020 for that entire time. And it's gotten worse. Our, our behavior toward each other is getting worse. There's no common courtesy. There's no respect. If you disagree with that, you, you're entitled to, but just, my, my, my own experience has been very frustrating. I have tried to appeal to your better, to your, your better senses, those people on council, asking us to at least treat each other with respect and courtesy. We can't do that. We don't seem to be able to do that. So our, 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 our labor council, who has developed these resolutions for other troubled councils, suggested doing this for us. And I think, I think it's, it's, it's hard to object to any of the principles expressed in those resolutions, but I'd be interested to hear which ones you object to.
So, well, I have a question regarding communications. So what is our process now for communicating to the borough manager and the borough president? Is it still that we send, whatever we want to send to Judith, we send through you?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's why you could blame me for all the, the sturm und drang that surrounded the mural painting, because I dropped the ball. And so, you know, crucify me for that, but.
I don't want to crucify.
Well, you, you, well, you have and you continue to, but that's for another time.
Wow, yeah.
Oh, it's totally true. Anyway, we're talking about the resolutions now, and I think the resolutions work to, to benefit the community.
Can we have a discussion?
That's, we're having a discussion.
Oh, okay. Well, my, my concern is, is that not just that communication stopped, but I would be sending stuff to Judith, like, months ago, and it never got to her. And I'd say, I hadn't heard from you. And she'd say, I never got the email. So that's my only concern, is I do feel we need to treat each other with respect. My concern is that you have all the power. And if you don't want to, if you just forget or don't feel like.
All the power, me?
Yes, to send our communications to Judith. And that's what bothers me. I think the way Ted had it, where we see seating, but you want us to just direct everything to you.
This wasn't my idea. The original, doing it this way was not originally my idea. This is what the consensus was as a way of trying to control it.
It was the majority at the time. It didn't mean that all of us agreed with it.
Believe me, I did not want to put myself in the position of being the conduit for all communications, but I was willing to undertake that responsibility if that's what you want the president to do. And that was, that was also the, the system we had set up with Ted, though it might not have always been followed, but that was, it's exactly the same as it was when, when Mr. Parker was president.
Well, and.
Is that correct?
Correct.
My problem is, like, last meeting, Judith just said, just send it directly to me. And I thought, okay.
And what, directly to you?
We were just talking about, like, some of this other communication with the events and stuff. And I thought, I get it, but I don't want to be in trouble, you know? But I need stuff to get through to her because it's important information. And I'm not trying to beat you up.
What changes would you, would you propose to make to the resolutions? Or you don't think we should have them at all?
I'm not saying that. I agree with pretty much everything. I just am concerned about everything. If you choose and, you know, not send it, we don't know that you decided not to send it to, through to Judith. And that makes it very difficult for us. Plus, we didn't even know that you were getting.
Well, if you want to go back to the mural thing, since I raised it, now you're, you're jumping on it. Was it, you're understanding that council needed to approve that before, before we went forward with it? And do we ever, did council ever vote on that? So you know that, so you know it was never voted on, right? So you could, you could say, well, by the way, why didn't this, why wouldn't we vote on this? You know, I thought we were ready to do these murals. Anyway, you know, I'm, I'm beating that dead horse, but, but in general, that's just one example.
But, you know, you, you'd ask me to explain what I do or do not like about this.
Yeah.
It's a word salad saying, will you please?
Not a word salad. We need a word salad.
Will you please play, play nice with everybody? It's basically what it is. And I don't disagree with that.
And we could use some playing nice for a change. That's exactly right.
I'm not agreeing.
That's exactly right.
You know what? I, I'm okay with any, no more discussion and we can just vote on it or not vote.
Actually, I'd like to say something if I could, Mr. Paul.
It's just for me.
I, I think, I think it's. Right after, yeah, let me finish first, Scott, and then you go right ahead. I find it extremely disappointing that we can't sit here and communicate about, communicating. And, and I, and I, I agree. It's, it's something that has gone on here for a long time. Mr. Paul is right about that. And we opened this meeting by saying we need to get along better and work together. And now we're arguing about how we communicate. And so I want to go back to where we started tonight. We need to find ways to communicate better. The fact that we even have to make a resolution to communicate with each other, like I said, I think that's disappointing. But thank you for the time.
I agree with you. I agree with you, so.
Hey, may I say something?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, I'm, my phone might be breaking up. Okay. I think this is a good, a good thing. It's a shame that it's come to that we need it. But if we follow the structure, and it's a pretty simple structure that we have here. We have eight people in borough council, okay, that we're getting a very small stipend each month, basically, to pay for our copies and any other little costs associated with, you know, driving to Doylestown, whatever, here and there. So we're basically doing this, we're basically volunteers. You can't even call this a paid job, not with, not with the noise and the nonsense you hear from a lot of people. A lot of good input from people. And we get a lot of nonsense from people, too. I need a borough manager over $130,000 a year to run this borough, okay? And I can honestly say for the first time in a long time, a competent borough manager that's not playing for any team, that's not involved in any team, she's completely bipartisan, independent and down the, down the middle. And has a lifetime of experience doing what she's doing right now. If I was her, I wouldn't want to be nagged every single day with stuff. I don't see how there's stuff that's that much of an emergency that we need to contact Judith. We're, we just approved an event that's happening in October. That's eight months away. I could see if we forgot about the Oktoberfest and we were sitting on, on October 2nd and said, oh my God, we need to approve the Oktoberfest, and that's an emergency for Judith. But that would not be an emergency for Judith, because that would be a lack of planning on our part. As long as we planned well, okay, and we knew our jobs, I don't see why we need to come to Judith with any, with anything more than once a month at a council meeting. And we completely, we, we, we're completely immune to any kind of sunshine violations. We're completely immune to any kind of he said, she said, because everything's on the record. You come up to Judith at a council meeting, you speak up, you ask the council president for permission to speak, then you speak. Everybody hears it. Everybody heard what you said. There's no, no need for whatever you're going to bring at a council meeting that, oh my God, I need, I need to speak one-on-one to Judith last Thursday on this. You can wait for Tuesday. I don't see what the emergency's for. I mean, if we're all got firebombs, then yeah, that's an emergency, but that wouldn't even be something the council would get involved. And that's George's job. I, I don't see what, I mean, yeah, there, there could be an instance here and there. I don't see the need to be, to be constantly communicating with the borough manager. If there's going to be an event in June or an event in July, you square all that away in March, April and May and let the event happen in June and close your eyes and pray Jesus by Christ. Everything's fine. I think we need to leave Judith alone and let her run this borough. She's done a lot of really good things. She's done more good things in the last.
Scott.
Eight months, 24 months, than the last 10 years. Let her do it and let us do our job.
Okay, Scott.
The structure. If you come to a meeting once a month, follow the structure.
Scott, with all, with all due respect, I, I take your point, but, but I think there, there might be a number of situations where council members might want to get information from the borough manager and not wait to just once a month. I think that's, that's not real. We're not saying every day, but, but I'm saying that we should have, the resolutions are in place, or we're suggesting the resolutions to govern the situations where somebody does feel like they, they need to, to contact the borough manager, get some information from the borough manager. And whether they go through me or somebody else, that, that's, that's one of the issues. But, but I don't think that you could say that no council member ever should have any reason not to talk, to talk to borough manager other than once a month at the meetings. That's, that's pretty draconian. This, this council is responsible. Hold on a second, Scott, please.
I'm thinking now, over the, over the next couple of weeks, if there's stuff that I need to communicate, I'm going to bring it up tonight. And it's her job to run the borough. Let her run the borough and, you know, she has our place, she has her place. I just don't see that every day. I don't.
This isn't, I, I don't think the, the resolutions aren't intended to make her do more work or impose, it's actually, I think, one of the main purposes is to insulate her from getting live requests from many different directions and having to respond to all of them immediately and not having any orderly way of trying to deal with them. So I don't, I'll, I'll defer to the borough manager's point on that, but, but I think the borough manager had, thought the resolutions were a good idea, too. I mean, that's why we, we put them on the agenda.
Yes.
And I've had, I've had things that didn't happen meetings over the last year. You probably count them on your write-in. And I sent an email to you, and I sent an email to Judith. Or I sent it to Ted Parker was here, I sent it to you. Honestly, God, you can, you can open your mailbox, inbox, email inbox up right now.
I'm not, I'm not.
Tell it to everybody. You've probably got five emails from me in the last year.
That's, I, I don't disagree with that. I acknowledge that.
Yeah, ma, after the mayor, may I speak, Mr. Paul?
Yeah, sure. Ms. Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say again, I don't.
Yeah, I just want to say again, I don't see, I mean, this council is responsible, was put in place for, and one of the main reasons is to oversee the manager. With all due respect, Ms. Danko, and so I don't see how limiting communication is in any way a good thing. If somebody, I mean, I understand that there's something that is not respectful or something like that, but when it comes down to just everyday issues that do come up, I think we need to go back to what we said at the beginning of this meeting. We need better communication because it doesn't just look bad. We had a gentleman leave because of the way we're talking to each other up here. And it doesn't just look bad to everyone sitting here. It looks bad to our neighbors and our neighbors' neighbors and our other towns. To Robins' point, we have a bad reputation at some points, and it's because we don't communicate well enough together. And listen, I'll take the lead on that, and I tried this when I first came in last year to try to get us all together more. It didn't work. I would be glad to try it again, but I think limiting communications, in my eyes, and I don't get to say, but I think it's my responsibility to say I don't think that's a good idea.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
This resolution does not give council more information, and that's part of the problem. We meet once a month, and we don't even get a draft agenda. We don't know anything until 72 hours before. That's not enough communication. That's my say. I'm sorry. And to Bud's point, he's absolutely right. Why we have to do a resolution to be nice to each other is, are we in kindergarten?
Apparently.
I think actually they treat each other better than, maybe I better move up to middle school. I mean, if you want to call the motion, I'm fine with that. I don't, well, you don't need, I don't need to be fine with it, but I'm just telling you I have no more to discuss. I think we have lack of communication now. There's nothing, there's nothing that happens downstairs in that borough that this council should not be privy to, except for, except for employees' personal information. Anything regarding a solicitor, action, so forth, we should all know about it. We should not be finding out about it from somebody on the street or, you know, in a paper or whatever. And by getting our packets on a Friday for a Tuesday meeting, and that's when we find out what the agenda is, I just don't think it's enough time. But that's myself, and I'm only speaking for myself now.
This resolution, thank you. This resolution was presented to me by Council President Paul and Solicitor Gerber regarding some of the issues that have taken place between council members. It is not meant to reduce the communication with the manager. It talks about respect. It talks about a lot of other items for employees. It talks about process, procedure, on how things should be done. There's nothing in there that talks about reduction of communication. I know that I provide counsel, as Nancy, as you just said, there's nothing that council shouldn't be privy to. There is nothing that council is not privy to. We have a council drop every Friday. There is so much information provided to council on a weekly basis, and then the information is provided on a Friday, which is five days prior to the Tuesday meeting. That is more time than ever was provided in past times. Your meeting was on a Monday, and you were provided information on a Friday. So I understand it's a lot to read, but we provide it in a form that it's in coincidence with the agenda. It's in order so that when you look at the agenda, the supporting documents are behind the agenda in order, so you have all of that information for you. And as I said, every week, we're continually putting information in a drop. We've made those drops more effective by separating items such as minutes, such as financials. There's many things that we have done so that it is more accessible and more readable, more convenient for everyone to acquire. We're constantly communicating. There's nothing that council is not aware of. In fact, I've been accused of talking too much and providing too much information. I've done this for over 30-some years of my life, and I have never had this take place before. I'm a very communicative manager.
You know, on the other hand, you know, I acknowledge that it is a short, it's a short window between Friday and Tuesday, especially when the only day in between, Monday, is a holiday, as it was this week. But that's, but them's the breaks. I mean, it used to be, before I got on council, we would have, they had agenda meetings a week, a week or two weeks before the regular meeting. But then you had the same issue there. It was getting the agenda ready right before the agenda meeting. So any way you slice it, you're going to have a deadline you're going to be up against, and you're going to have things coming in, and you're going to want to keep the agenda, try to keep the agenda open long enough that you can actually get more current things in if you have to, if you have an emergency. So unfortunately, by dint of the process, I think you're going to be faced with short turnaround time, no matter what. Now, in between meetings, we still get a weekly drop every week with documents as they come in. It's not like we get everything just once a month, but the agenda does come in the last week before the meeting, and it's a quick turnaround time, and it's a lot of work for all of us, you know? And I recognize that. It's not an easy job, and it comes on the weekend, and it can suck sometimes, but I don't think that, you know, and we try to build as much lead time into as possible. In fact, Judith has a cutoff of what, Monday, for the agenda? And we, but we keep keeping it open. We keep squeezing things in, and before you know it, things, changes are still being made up until like midnight Friday. So what do you want? Do you want to have a fixed agenda two weeks ahead of time that doesn't take, that can't be cracked, no matter what happens in the intervening two weeks? Or do you want to try to work the way we've been doing, which is you try to get most of it together, the final agenda's not ready until the Friday before? If anybody wants to talk to me or the Borough Manager about items on the agenda, you certainly are welcome to, and I have hardly ever gotten calls or messages to that effect, mural aside. So that, you know, you can't have, you can't have it both ways. You can't have a long lead time and have a timely agenda. But if you want to have, if you want to go back to the old route where you have the agenda two weeks, set forth, two weeks before the meeting, we could probably do that, but I think we're going to find ourselves, you know, with our hands tied on far too many issues. That's my own personal.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
I feel I stand alone here, so I'm not going to take up anybody else's any more time. And with all due respect, we used to get a draft agenda in prior years, so we would know something that was coming up. Now, granted, we get a packet every week, but some of that stuff that we get doesn't really have anything to do with the agenda. Some does, some doesn't. And I would agree with Ms. Danko that you're right. This resolution doesn't talk about less communication, but my issue is I don't think we get enough communication. So I promise, that's it, I'm done.
In a different direction, Nancy, but then I would certainly like to know how we can communicate more than, I think that needs to be talked about because that really is separate from this resolution. And if that's what is asked, I think we can accomplish that. I think communication is imperative, and I've said that before. I communicate as much as possible. I don't believe that this resolution is regarding that. I think it is more towards process and procedures, and I think your solicitor, not mine, has thought it was a good idea to adopt, and it was presented to me, and I was asked if I felt it was a good idea, and I said yes.
Yeah, the resolutions aren't supposed to be more or less information. It's supposed to create a more, a more regulated, you know, cleaner method of making that communication, so the communications don't get garbled and crossed up. It's supposed to, it's supposed to enhance communication by giving a set of rules that all of us can follow so we know what the rules are, so we don't, after the fact, say, oh, I thought I was supposed to do this, or you didn't tell me I need to do this. Well, now we're telling you what you're supposed to do. And if you don't like the procedure, then we can tweak the procedure, but don't say we don't want a procedure at all.
First of all, we didn't know anything about this until we saw this agenda on Friday.
No, I believe I forwarded to.
You did.
I got a response from Catherine five minutes after it was sent out by the lawyer. So I know that she saw it as soon as I saw it, which was two days ago. I mean, Wednesday, I think it was, last Wednesday.
You sent it prior to the delivery.
I don't know that that matters, but I want to correct the record.
Okay. Well, I'm going to ask.
I'm sorry, Carlita?
I said, we definitely had it before today.
Right.
We got it last week, yes.
Right.
Getting an email by President, Council President.
Yeah, I gave it to council members as soon as I got it from Mr. Gerber. I mean, I turned it right around because I wanted to make sure everyone did have time to see it, to react to it, so that we could discuss it and vote on it this week, you know, so.
Will anybody be angry if I say call the motion?
There was a motion.
It was. We have to vote. Want to make us vote?
Sure.
Well.
All in favor? No, let's do a roll call. I'm sorry, we, I do a roll call for this.
We have a motion by Ms. Hohol, a second by Mr. Lubin. Excuse me. Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Paul.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Manis.
Yes.
Mr. Lubin.
Yes.
Ms. Hohol.
Yes.
Ms. Price Engelhardt.
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock.
On principle, no.
Seven yes, one no. I'm sorry, passed seven.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8M, call for motion to approve mutual support agreement with Morrisville Municipal Authority.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. I'll say by way of discussion that the mutual support agreement has been approved and signed by the Morrisville Municipal Authority, and it's as a result of negotiations between their representatives and ours, and so it's something that I endorse and support and hope that the majority of council agrees. Basic terms that we get, the borough is getting compensated $450,000 for this year and next year, in consideration of which we provide certain services, but we also will expedite their applications for permits and other work to be done, and what else do I need? What else is in there? Anyway, everyone's had a copy of the agreement for at least a week, so if you had any questions. And I got one or two comments, which we addressed with the MMA, and they addressed it with a redraft. So I think that it's a good agreement for the borough, and I hope that we can support it. Any other comments?
Do you want to also tell the public that the MMA is moving more toward where they are going to have their own people actually fixing the water leaks and not relying on the borough employees?
Right, and they're also planning to move into their own premises from Borough Hall.
Yeah, I hope everyone, I hope everyone realizes that they bought the, some property down at the old steel mill, which is now Keystone Industrial Park, and whenever that is up and running, they will be vacating Borough Hall and moving into that facility. Yeah. I'm not really sure about the bills and how they're going to get paid. I think there might be a person here, or there just might be a time slot where you can come here to pay your water bill, and, but that's still yet to be worked out and far down the lane.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8N, call for motion to approve purchase of a pickleball net to be used in Williamson Park Tennis Court area.
So moved.
I'll second it. Discussion.
If I may? I was hoping that we could have Superintendent John Later, please come out and have a discussion with us. I was, I had a request, I had a request from Catherine to place this on the agenda, and after I had the request, I had the opportunity to have a discussion with Mr. Later, and I wanted everyone on council to have an understanding of.
Well, you sent us the pictures, which is great.
Yes, I sent you the pictures. So I was hoping, I know a picture's worth a thousand words, but I think Mr. Later could probably elaborate on that, if you don't mind, Council President.
No, please do.
Thank you, John.
All right, so the first thing is the pickleball net, we don't have to purchase a pickleball net. Tennis court net is the same net as a pickleball net. Yes, yes, it is. It is.
It's three inches, it's three inches smaller in the middle, the volley is a little bit different. So real pickleball people, it's not the same, but, but I appreciate you checking into it.
That being said, the courts themselves are in bad shape. They, the useful life of them, there's cracks in them. We've tried, my guys have tried to fill them, fill the cracks, seal them, and it just continues to erode and erode in. I spoke to a company that does restoration, and he said to me, looking at the pictures, that's not going to be, it's not worth us restoring it. You're better off just completely replacing the tennis courts.
Well, then we should probably take the nets out.
Yeah, because people are playing down there.
That's up to, that's up to council and the manager, how they want to handle that.
Well, it's not, it's not, I mean, people can still play. It's just the ball might hit the crack and go off.
Might hit the crack and go off, yes.
Right, so they can volley and just fool around. It's just if you are a real tennis player, you're not going to want to play there.
Yes, right.
So the other thing is a pickleball court is 44 feet by 20-something, and the tennis courts are 78 by 21.
Yeah, but most, most people, if you don't have a pickleball court, they bring cones or they bring whatever, and they shorten it up. They know.
Yeah, they have portables.
Right, it's not, you know, for us to resurface it, as I said, you have to repaint it, all those things, you really should have dedicated pickleball courts. Now, again, we can do whatever we want, but I don't know at this moment if we should just put it on hold and figure out what we're going to do with the tennis courts themselves. They should be replaced.
So your recommendation is not to do it?
Well, I mean, pickleball court, people can come down and play pickleball. Understand it also, pickleball courts, it's not like a tennis court. I mean, it's not like tennis. It is a very loud sport, so, I mean, compared to tennis. So that's another consideration you have to have, too, down there.
We've had a lot of requests.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and it's, pickleball's a real.
Absolutely.
Sport. And so a lot of people have requested that we get a pickleball net. They're about $250, which is way within our budget, but, you know.
So you're taking the tennis court net down?
Well, one of the nets.
I would, yeah.
Take one down.
Okay, well, again, I said, I don't know.
But it's up to council.
People I spoke to with the pickleball said, they can use a pickleball net. It's not, you're not having a league down there, you're not having, it's just people going down there and playing pickleball. So, and they adapt to that. But again, it's up to council if they want to put the net three inches lower. It's, you know.
Well, only in a certain section, not the whole thing's three inches lower, just the volley section because you're not playing the full net. And people are very passionate about it. Like, people were paying $150 for a paddle, $200 for a paddle. So I don't know if they would, you know, appreciate the wrong net, but, you know, whatever this council wants to, if they think it's frivolous or unnecessary, I mean, I don't know if anybody's playing pickleball down there now, though. I don't know. I can't confirm.
No, and I'm not saying it's frivolous. Don't get me.
No, well.
What I'm saying to you is if we're going to invest in this like that, the $250, then you should have, the paint, the line should be painted that way. It should all be set up for a pickleball.
And safe.
Right, and safe, but you'd have to paint the line. Right, and safe, but you'd have to paint the lines. If you're going to put a net up, paint the lines, which, then again, go back into the court, not being...
Quick question. I said, "safe," and is it a safety issue, or is it just that the ball gets caught in those ridges?
As it continues to get worse, it will become a safety issue, yes. Right now, I wouldn't say that it is.
We went down yesterday, take a look at it, but just the spots that you said were...
It's cracked this way, and then it's cracked going both ways. So it's something that council really should think about. Though they've, I don't know how long they've been there, those courts, a long time, and their usefulness is done, for sure.
It's at least since the '70s.
Yeah.
Well, but they've been refurbished since then, and we also...
Right, they just need to go like a coating on top of it.
Correct. And new nets were purchased when the Trenton Tennis Organization came over and were doing summer classes, and that was probably early 2000s, so...
That's our condition, so...
Yeah.
That was my point. I just wanted to make it so we understand.
Thank you.
I was hoping to make a suggestion, because I know that these pictures do not do the justice of when you go down there and you view the cracks. It's much worse, actually.
Oh, no, we've seen them.
When you go down and you see that.
You can see, my guys tried to repair, I don't interrupt you, I'm sorry, but my guys tried to repair it. You can see the black where we put tar. We filled it, we put tar in, and then you go back a month later, and it's all gone, so...
Certainly, so I was hoping, and whatever decision is made tonight, I think it, you know, will be a viable one with council, but I was hoping we will have, we will have a beginning of our master planning to start very shortly with Williamson Park. We have a grant for that. And I would like some of these items to be placed on, you know, those recommendations. So I don't want anyone to take away from whatever does come out of this evening that, "Oh, we're never going to get pickleball," or we're not. I think that we could possibly get a lot of positive things with the plan that we're going to work on very shortly. So I wanted to, you know, present something positive, as I was saying, no matter what the decision is this evening, whether we let it alone as it is, or if we try to do something as per what was requested.
So can we table this?
I have a question for John.
Yes, Scott.
Is John still the microphone?
Yes.
Hey, John, a couple of questions for you about pickleball. I don't think I've ever met anyone that plays pickleball. I don't really know too much about it. So, how popular is it?
Very.
Very.
Now, in the realm of pickleball, I'm assuming this is not something you can just go play in a backyard or in a, like, in a parking lot somewhere, like, up in front of Garden Farm Market when the... What is the supply versus demand in the air? Versus pickleball places to play? And the recent fact is, when I was young, playing in the woods down the step of the field, the fields were less than desirable. And I know this might sound bad to some people, that the fields down there are really nice right now because they, you know, the Little League basically came in and took over the fields and made them really nice. On a much, much smaller scale of people coming in and taking things over, what would be the chances of having some pickleball...
Organization?
...help out and make it more, you know, make it, you know, bring it up to, of the pickleball standards? You know, without getting carried away of having pickleball take over the park, and, you know, everybody complaining, "Oh, I can't do anything in the park because all the pickleball people are there," but have some pickleball people come down and, you know, on a Saturday and do up the little areas so that they can, you know, play their game all week. Is that possible or not?
Scott, I'm not sure if it is or not. I don't speak, I haven't spoken to anybody that plays pickleball or leagues to know enough about it. But like I said, the few people that I've talked to that have played pickleball say they, a lot of times, if they don't have it, if there's no place for them, they'll use a tennis court, and they'll set the cones up, and they'll play it there. Now, they said, "If we want to invite people down there to play, we need to make sure that it's proper," that it's, you know, and then that does bring people into town. Maybe we can, there can be leagues down there, just like the Tennis Association gave over and wanted to do it.
What if we invited people, what if we invited people to a potential place to play, and they have to, and make it playable? Would that be something we could look into?
I don't mean to interrupt you, but there are places already in place that people are going to. So, I mean, we're at the end of the train here, so...
You're at the very end, yeah, there's a lot of...
It's already happening all around.
Especially in New Jersey. They, it's, there's...
I mean, just locally, you got the Lower Makefield, yeah, so...
Pennsbury Raccoon Club advertises pickleball on their website, too. Could we table this, so we get some more information and kind of do it better than using old nets or on a broken court? Would that be doable, do you think?
I second that.
There should be a vote.
I thought you were going to table it, no?
Well, they made a vote, they made a motion to table.
Who made the motion?
Andrew. I seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Okay. Tabled. Item 8O. Call for motion to approve the borough to co-sponsor and waive event fees in consideration of tree planting for Earth Day festivities with dance crew slash group, Ekulpuli, anyway, Talawo, Zili, anyway, you guys do the best with it pronounced here, which translates to hummingbirds of the earth. The event will take place 4/22/23, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the open space area next to the Marsville Dog Park.
So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion.
This has been going on for years. It was last year that Ted Parker asked me if we could, the Parks and Recreation would, the borough would sponsor it, and we said yes. For those people who've gone down there and taken part, it's a beautiful, beautiful all-day ceremony. The costumes are incredible, the meaning, you can be, you know, participate in the dance scene. I had my grandchildren there, they got in the dance circle. It's amazing, and so I think we should be very proud that this is a part of our borough. And I encourage as many borough people, council members, to just go down and watch it that day, even for a little bit. Mr. Paul?
Yeah.
Can I add that they also will be planting a tree along with the... That's the tradition. Yeah, traditionally, they plant a tree, but that's with the cooperation of John Later and the MEAC, too. And the MEAC, if I remember correctly, they have a walk in the preserve that morning before this activity. So I guess if you want to make a real day of it, you can do that as well.
Are they still planting the tree, or it's, because the motion says in lieu of tree planting?
No, I think that's a...
It should be.
I'm saying that should be in consideration of. It's exactly opposite of in lieu of, I think.
That's my question.
With all due respect to council or whoever wrote that, anyway. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Okay, now we have vacancies to fill on various boards and corporations. The Marsville Economic Development Corporation, as we were discussing earlier, has three three-year term appointments expiring March 1, 2026. We've gotten letters of interest from all, these are all three current incumbents, as I understand, John Sernaviva Jr., Don Doreto, and Frank McCarthy.
Can I just make a motion that we approve these three, since we have three for three?
No, I'd rather vote separately. I think we should do it separately.
All right, because we do appointments different every time we do appointments.
From now on, if I'm seeing this chair, we're going to do them separately.
All right. Each individual, name?
Yeah.
And vote. Okay.
Nominations.
I nominate John Sernaviva Jr. to the position of the Morrisville Economic Development Corporation, three-year term.
Okay, second? Do we need a second?
No seconds.
So we just vote, we vote? Okay. Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Manis?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
No.
Ms. Ho-Ho?
Yes.
Ms. Price-Angelhart?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, well, I shouldn't say it's not a motion, I apologize. It passes 7-1.
Seven to one, okay. Very good.
Yes.
I so moved that we...
Frank McCarthy.
Okay.
Okay.
Second it. Oh, we don't second it, sorry.
No, no second. Roll call. Frank McCarthy.
I'm getting there. Ms. Price-Angelhart?
Yes.
Ms. Ho-Ho?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
Yes.
Mr. Manis?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
I nominate Mr. Don Doreto.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Manis?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
No.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Price-Angelhart?
Yes.
Ms. Ho-Ho?
Yes.
Passes 7-1. Council President.
Thank you. Library Board. One three-year appointment expiring March 1, 2026.
I nominate...
We have two letters of interest, one from Mr. Lonnie Johnson, who we heard from earlier, and the other from our council member, Nancy Sherlock.
I nominate Mr. Lonnie Johnson. I feel that his library experience and being in the library would be beneficial, especially in lieu of the budget problems that the library has and the fundraising that he might be able to help the library with.
Okay.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
No.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Manis?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
Yes.
Ms. Ho-Ho?
Yes.
Ms. Price-Angelhart?
No.
Passes 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10.
Thank you for, Mr. Johnson, for coming in and introducing yourselves to us.
Congratulations.
Six, two.
Doning Hearing Board. One three-year appointment, the remainder of an unexpired term expiring January 6, 2025. We have one letter of interest from Hassan Jalad, who had just been, who had been a regular member until the last election.
I would like to nominate Hassan Jalad, please.
Okay. Roll call.
And that would be the remainder of the full-time position.
That's through January 6, 2025.
Yes. Ms. Price-Angelhart?
Yes.
Ms. Ho-Ho?
Yes.
Mr. Lubin?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Manis?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherlock?
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Okay. Thank you. Other business.
Mr. Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
I know it's a late hour, but I still have to make a couple inquiries, please.
Hey, it's your dime.
One is the situation we have, still have with the trash and recycling. And I'm going to ask, I guess, that this group take their conversations outside?
Yeah, please, try and wrap this thing up.
So anyway, there's, on Center Street, they're picking up, they're recycling and throwing into the regular trash. So I've talked to Republic. They say they're going to try to fix it. We'll see what happens. But what I have a question is, two questions. One, does Republic give us the, a list of the complaints that they receive? Because not everything goes in Tracer and people call. So when we're trying to get a true figure of the mishaps or the challenges, I have to wonder if there's a lot going on that we don't know about, because it's not all in Tracer. And we encourage people to call them, we're putting Tracer instead of the borough. So I guess that's my first question. And I, it's my belief that we contracted out with Republic. It should not be the residents' job to have to follow up over and over again with phone calls to get their trash picked up in the correct, the correct way. So also, I'm just wondering if we can get a report soon from Gilmore regarding the flood, the flood protection program. We see, every month, we pay him, and he's working on this, but can we get a report from Gilmore? I mean, we just don't, we haven't had one.
I'm sorry, regarding the flood program?
The flood protection.
When is the levy going to be certified?
Well, that's my next question. My understanding is, last summer, I believe, we were told that it was certified, and people have done a right to know, and they're not able to get that certification. But the whole idea of the certification was that we, they, the people that live down there, on Park in particular, and Central, would get some insurance relief. So what's the process? Is their insurance company going to have to come to us for that certification?
No. This is something that I'll reach out to Gilmore and I'll get back to council with. So thank you for that.
Okay. All right.